Good afternoon, everybody. Let's bow our head for a moment of silence and reflection and appreciation. All righty, thank you very much. And we'll officially call the meeting to order and welcome all of you. I see a lot of faces of Holden Beach that have been here many times before. And number three, let's pledge allegiance to the flag to my right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Hewitt, you got something you need to add to the agenda?
Yes, sir. Got an agenda add in the form of two items, memorandum of agreement between town of Holden Beach and EJE dredging service for emergency dredging of the Lockwood Folly inlet and the associated budget amendment in the amount of $850,000. Budget ordinance 2310, those two items, the MOA and the budget ordinance amendment. And I'd suggest it be added after item 10.
All right. What are we going to label it? 10A?
Yes, sir.
And we're going to call it what?
Dredging MOA and budget amendment.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, to be... All right, anybody got anything else?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the amended proposed amended agenda?
Yes, sir. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
To be improper or amatter of court. We do have people in the audience. I think we've got one person already signed up to speak to number 10. And does anybody have desire to speak to 10A? Okay. All right. So we've got a motion, a second, and we've approved it, right?
Yes, sir.
So we're going to move on to number five and consider the minutes of April 18 and 20. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written for the regular meeting on April 18th and the special meeting on April the 20th.
Second. All right. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimously approved. Number six, public comments. I have Jim, our regular speaker, Mr. Jim Bauer. Item number 10, Jim. Good evening to you.
Good evening. Good evening, all. Jim Bauer, 329 Ocean Boulevard West. Just, I'd like to ask, please, for clarity, when all these ordinances that were changing, there's an awful lot of abbreviations, AARP, Fund 10, the NCWR grant, the B part, the CRF. When you're speaking about those, if you could tell us what that is? It would be greatly appreciated. Also, street drainage project of, I guess, $10,000. I'd like to know if that is pre or post the new Ocean Boulevard West and East. Thank you.
All right. When we get to those items, we'll try to cover those answers. All right. Madam Clerk, does that complete our list of obligations for speakers?
Yes, sir.
All right. We'll go to police report, Chief Dixon.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So not much in the numbers here, normal operating business. If you have questions on that, I'd be glad to answer them. Couple of things I will talk about is last month, I mentioned we were in the process, had the paperwork sent off for an officer we were trying to hire. We were able to get him sworn in the end of April. So we've got him on board now and working to get him through field training and all the computer programs and that whole list of stuff. So we're going into the summer season with a new officer and very excited about it.
Are we one down now?
Yes, sir. That is correct. We're still one officer short. We do have a couple of applicants we're looking at for that last position, but we have not gotten to the point of doing job offers or anything like that yet. Still in the background process for those.
I had a chance to meet John. He seems a very nice young man. I was able to get him from Women's Police Department. It was a feather in your cap, sir. Good job.
Yes. Well, couldn't have done it without the board's support to get us financially stable to be able to offer.
Yes, sir.
Some jobs. So we thank y'all for that. Other than that, Days at the Docks was at the end of April, last weekend of April. We had a good crowd on Saturday, although it was shut down on Sunday because of weather, inclement weather that was coming through. So we had some high wind and heavy rain that weekend. Other than that, we've kind of been seeing more parking violations, but we expect that as the season's ramping up. So this is a reminder for everyone that paid parking is in effect. And if you are going to park, you have to park between the signs. Everywhere else says no parking, park between the signs that allow parking.
That's what I circled on your report here, the 28. That was up from previous months, but you're doing a good job. Thank you, sir.
Well, we appreciate it. We're trying to stay with it. And then the last thing I have to say is last month, there was a task we put out about the no-wake zones. And staff, we are working on that. I do not have anything in this packet, but hopefully I'll have some answers to bring back next month. So just wanted to let you know it's on the radar. We are working on it. It's not a done deal, but hopefully by next month I'll have some.
It'll take a long time coming.
Some answers.
Yes, sir.
So that's where we're at with that. But that's all I've got for the police report. And questions, comments, or concerns, I will be glad to try to answer them for you.
Any questions, commissioners? If not, thank you to your staff, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Evans, inspections.
Good afternoon. Just wanted to give a little... As usual, we're pretty busy. Where we have retired, someone retired, that's got us kind of reorganizing over there a little bit. But inspections is still going, is still going strong. Permits are being issued. They're moving in and out at a very good pace. We've got our active new home permits are now at 34. Our other permits are at 327. The permit issued over 30,000, we issued 28 of them. Substantial improvements, we've got $100,000 or more. Usually, we've got five of those out there. We've got 16 that are waiting to be picked up that we've reviewed and are ready to roll out the door. That's the total permits this month of 377. We've got eight permits in review. Permits that were submitted that are incomplete, we've had 10, so they'll be coming back in. Zoning permits that were issued, we had four. KAMA permits issued 10. Three of those KAMA permits were applications that we made on behalf of the town for locations that we have. And staff will be preparing, think two more in the next month. Permit service for inspections are 108, and the total inspection for this month was 406. Other than that, we've picked the projects that the board has set in motion. We're working on those every day, have been moving forward with them. As I spoke of last month, 191 is now gone.
Yay.
I don't think that we have any other structures that are anywhere near the condition of that one. I think 161's got the bombing, 191, OBW was the last. I think we have Home and Public Avenue, but they voluntarily took it down. I think the town's in really good shape.
The house at Holden Street and Ocean Boulevard East, used to have your name all over it?
Yeah.
Some of the neighbors still calling me, wanting to know what's going on there.
There was, someone purchased that property, came in and was going, and actually made applications and were getting ready to do all the things that would be required in order to bring it into compliance. But the last conversation that we had with them was that they were considering taking it down and rebuilding. So that seems to have, they have permits, they could be working, but I think they're reevaluating their option there. It was staff's recommendation long ago that the structure be rebuilt. We thought that was the best financial improvement.
Yeah. Two of the calls I've had in the last couple of weeks for about the growth in the yard and all.
Well, what we'll do is we'll contact them. We just happened to have a conversation about that two days ago. We were actually down there and we'll contact them, let alone, they need to clean it up and let us know what's going on.
Thanks, sir.
Tim, out of the waterway docks or the canal docks, is that still in the works, trying to get something?
The planning board will be getting information on next Tuesday. It's supposed to come before then. We'll be carrying them some information and hopefully they'll make a decision about what they want to do there. We're working our way through how to best have a pierhead. And so we've had several discussions, but we think we've got the idea right. We're supposed to meet with Rob and Patrick from KAMA. They will be the ones that will enforce that pierhead line. And so we're hoping to get some information from them about not only how they enforce it, but what other people are actually, which one's working and which one's not. We're supposed to meet with them Friday.
Thank you, Tim.
All righty. We're on number nine on the agenda for those that are listening.
Good evening. Coastal Race Productions does a race here every fall. That date's changed a bit based on hurricanes and weather in the past, but it's scheduled for October 7th this year. They needed to get on your agenda earlier because they do have some obligations out of town. They come before you every year because you guys have to approve them putting out a banner at the base of the bridge, even though they do have to check with the property owner as well. You have to approve vendors on site and a beer garden. The location of the beer garden will be in the same spot it's been the past several years. The only change to what they're asking this year is that they're asking for two beers per participant over age 21, which is what they're asking at all of their venues throughout the county. So I did want to point out that change to the board.
That's the same event that we had last year with all the bikers or the runners?
Runners.
Runners. Then I make a motion, we approve Coastal Race Productions run HB for October the 7th, 2023, and use of a banner and a beer garden and a setup for the finish line area.
Is there a second? Second. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimously approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christie.
We're on number 10, Mr. McCrane.
This amendment is necessary to move the American Rescue Plan, that's the ARP money from Fund 11 to the general fund, which is Fund 10. And this isn't going to actually be extended this year. This is going to be rolled forward in the next year's budget, but this is just the entry that we have to do to be able to use the money however we please.
But it's going to be used for?
Stormwater.
The stormwater. That's what it's earmarked for. We're just moving it out of the...
American Rescue Plan fund. That's where they made us house it to be able to accept the money.
Okay. Could we address Jim's question about the timing of it?
It's not so much a ponder, just, American Rescue Plan again, that's what COVID. General fund, I understand, you said you moved it from, what, it was something to the middle, or am I incorrect?
No, it's going from the American Rescue Plan fund, which is Fund 11, to Fund 10.
That way it can be, we can utilize it in next year's budget, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, that said, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 23-09, amending ordinance 2214, revenues and appropriations ordinance to move it from Fund 10, I mean 11, to Fund 10.
Is there a second? Second. Discussion, anybody? All in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Unanimously approved. Thank you, sir. 10A, Mr. Hewitt?
Yes, sir. Addressing the emergency dredging of the Lockwood Folly inlet. I'll read from my memo that I prepared for the package. Navigation in the Lockwood Folly inlet has reached emergency status due to the severe shelling of the inlet, which has prohibited use of the federal dredges normally used for this purpose. The inlet is so shoaled in that the U.S. Coast Guard has pulled the navigation aids. Staff is coordinated with Dare County, Brunswick County, the Oregon Inlet Task Force, EJE dredging service, and the required regulatory agencies to obtain permissions and capability required to attempt an emergency dredging of the Lockwood Folly inlet. The final dredge corridor approval is pending and will be required before commencement of any emergency maintenance dredging. The total cost of the project is scoped at a not-to-exceed amount of $850,000, with the North Carolina Division of Water Resources providing 75% grant funding. That's the grant that y'all approved applying for last month.
Yes, sir.
And Brunswick County and Holden Beach each splitting the other 25% match. With board approval, it's highly possible pending regulatory final demarcation of an acceptable dredging corridor that emergency dredging could begin by week's end. And the recommendation is that to approve the MOA with EJE and the associated budget amendment for emergency dredging of the Lockwood Folly inlet.
David, it's going to be done and discussed with a, excuse me, hopper-style dredge instead of a side draft, so we can make room for the corps to get in and do what we've already set forth with them.
That's what we hope we're able to do. Sidecast operations will probably be just to facilitate loading the hopper dredge, and then the hopper dredge will take it around and put it in a location in an area in what I call the swash zone, about 2,000 feet from the pier back east is that area. And the swash zone is basically eight feet deep. So they load that hopper dredge up, it's about 130 feet long, I believe, and bring it around into the suds, and they slide up just as close to the hill as they can and drop the bottom out of it, back off and go get another load. So it is, even though this is a navigation maintenance project, it does have beneficial use of dredge material in it.
So it's going to be put up where it will eventually, as it usually does, move east to west and...
And we sense the payment terms are based on volumetrics, and another reason why they don't want to do side caster, because you can't count that sand that's sprayed out there in the air. So that's the reason why they prefer hopper, and we prefer hopper too. We will include, we know how much is in that hopper, and we will actually geolocate where those drops are made and include it in our beach management and monitoring program as part of it.
Good.
Get a lot better outcome.
Yep.
Yep.
I'm making a motion to approve EJ MOA and associated budget amendment for emergency dredging of Lockwood Folly.
I'll second that.
I want to say this, since we've got a little discussion time. It's the worst I've ever seen it. It's the absolute worst I've ever seen it. I've been down here since the mid-'80s. I've seen it every which way but loose. We were an hour on the falling side of High Tide on Sunday, going fishing in a three-foot draft, outboard boat, and hit body. I'm not, this town shouldn't wait on an accident or somebody to get hurt or killed or any of that stuff to act about this inlet. The inlet, to me, for the island, is one of the most important things we could have. It's the avenue to the ocean. It's why a lot of people come here. It puts smiles on people's faces when they get out there and the kid catches their first fish. You got charter boat captains that make their livelihood. Commercial fishermen used to use it. We can't really use it anymore with shrimp boats and that type of thing. But back in the day, you could. And we need to get that thing to back in the day shape. A hopper dredge is 10 times better than a side cast dredge. I really don't care if I ever see a side cast dredge back in the inlet. It's a patch job to me. You blow it over and it goes right back in. It doesn't stay open long, and to me, it's a waste of money. We need to, although this is great, and it'll get the inlet open, and a side cast will too temporarily, we need to look at a long-term, more permanent solution for keeping that inlet open, where we're not spending this kind of money over and over and over and over and over again to keep that inlet open. We, as an island and a community and a town, and Oak Island's probably saying the same thing, we cannot afford to lose access to that ocean out there. So this is a great thing because if this weren't to happen, that inlet wouldn't be dredged this whole entire summer. And imagine what effect that would have had on this community. So I'm really applaud getting this done. This is...
Well, we got to get the final corridor approved, and that could still go, you know, up in smoke, but if we don't do this, that dredging can't happen.
Right. Well, David, again, as Brian said, the long-term sights on this, maybe we need to get in with some of our fellow islands in the area and maybe see about getting a dredge that we could use on a permanent basis, a hopper-type dredge that we can use on a permanent-type basis. So as again, you just ride up and down Ocean Boulevard. If you're headed west, just look to your right, and every canal is full of boats. And that's what those folks want to take those boats, and they want to be able to enjoy them. So I applaud you for getting this done.
I'd like to add one thing. I agree with everything you guys just said, but additional to that is the environmental impact.
Absolutely.
Getting the dirty water out of the Lockwood Folly River into the ocean so that the little critters up the Lockwood Folly River and in the estuaries can get fresh salt water in there to increase the conditions that they have to live in. And so it's not just for us humans, it's for all of our little crabs and fish and oysters and all that kind of stuff that will benefit as well, and it's far overdue. Doc, you got anything you have to say?
Just in the interim for a warning, if you're going to use the Lockwood Folly inlet at this juncture at this point in time right now, you really, really, really need to know what you're doing, and you really, really need to be careful. It's dangerous.
And don't get caught sideways anywhere inside that inlet area when the waves are coming in and broadside you, then you're really in trouble. All right, you ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous, madam clerk. We're now on number 11, public comments on general items. Anybody want to talk about anything? Yes, sir. Come to give your name and address.
It looks like Lockwood Folly Day. I'm Irv Woods, property 289 Ocean Boulevard East. I bought my first property on the east end in 2002. I was concerned about the possible expansion of the inlet hazard area. I was never able to reach Ken Robinson before they had their meeting in Manio, but I did talk to a nice lady on his staff named Angela, and that was after I discovered the memo that Ken had written recommending postponing at least a year for any action on that. So, and then Ken called me after their Manio meeting, and he and I probably talked 45 minutes. He wasn't in a bind then because the issue had come and gone. I explained it, and I was unaware, if my memory serves me, I think he said the last time when the inlet hazard areas were designated was like in 1979? Was that be right, Fallon?
I'm not certain.
Okay. Anyway, he said, obviously, a lot's changed since then. I said, yes, it has. I was not here when the 31 houses or whatever were relocated and moved in the late '80s, early '90s, but I told him that the first two decades of that next 60 years was the bad part, that since I bought in 2002 down there, there had not been a house removed or floated away or washed away during that period of time. We've had good governments, mediocre governments, great governments over the last 20 years, and in all cases, the town has believed that they needed to protect, clear the inlet to greatest extent possible, get sand on the beach. When the town, including me, paid and still paying for the Central Reach project, my recollection is that sand cost over $10 a cubic yard during the same time we did a piggyback project on the east end, and I think the town paid 60 cents a cubic yard. So the town has not been carrying the east end, as it were. Y'all recognize that you need to keep the inlet open, and I've always been amused and disappointed watching a side caster shake enough sand, they run it incoming tide, outgoing tide. It obviously can remove a sandbar in the short term, but it's just rearranging the deck chairs in terms of sand. I've watched the hopper dredge come down and dump sand in real shallow out in front of my homes, and the hopper is the way to go. Thank you all very much. I appreciate what you do to protect that end of the beach. There've been half a dozen more big new houses that have been built. A lot of them are rentals down there. They're generating a lot of tax revenue, both occupancy tax and real estate tax, so the east end is carrying our weight now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, anyone else? All right, we'll go to number 12, town managers report.
Yes, sir. Briefly. Christie, could you stand up a minute? You don't mind? In case y'all haven't met Christie before, what you see before you is a newly minted UNC Pembroke Master's Degree of Public Administration with a 4.0 grade point average. I'm not used to being around people that's got a perfect score, summa cum laude. I think I was a thank the laude when I graduated. But congratulations to Christie on completing her graduate degree here last month, or recently.
I know we have at least one educator in the room. That's quite an honor, isn't it, sir?
It is. It is a graduation.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Hewitt.
Irv got ahead of me there with the proposed expanded inlet hazard area. In case folks weren't aware, that proposed expansion of the inlet hazard area has now been put off for at least another year to 18 months. We won't go to sleep on it, and we'll wait till it comes back around, but our position has not changed on the efficacy of that IHA. But we're glad that they chose not to take action on it this time around. The $2.7 million grant from the EPA on the Greensboro lift station, we have made our initial contacts and have sent the preliminary documents... initial contacts and have sent the preliminary documents over to them. The point I'm trying to make here is that even though that this grant is congressionally directed, we still have to apply for the money, and we still have to meet all the criteria that goes along with it. So we've got our first submittals in on that. And it's important because this first decision is going to dictate whether or not we have to do a full NEPA review or can qualify for the exemption. And if we have to go for a NEPA review, that gets into timeframe, and it's just that we think that we want to go the exemption route. Bathroom trailer, I caught some comments on that. Delivered to the pier last week. Public Works is prepping the hookups and the layout. Probably going to be a couple more days before opening. Hopefully, we can get it open before the end of the week or for the weekend. Food truck traffic, we're seeing inquiries increase there. We've got two lined up and another one interviewing a potential candidate there. Beach Rangers start summer season next week. As concerts begin the week after on Sunday, May the 28th, repairs at 796 are underway. The carpentry work will probably be finished next week. Tide ridge, a lot of things are happening next couple weeks. Tide ridge paving, that preparation work over there is slated to start next week. And Public Works informs me that their stormwater assessment has kicked off with some underground camera work. They finished Jordan Boulevard and half of Mullet Street with two more to go. And suffice it to say, I'll let Chris expand on exactly what he's seeing, but the data that we're finding is revealing, illuminating, and very useful so far. It's amazing what you can find on the inside of a pipe with a camera. And that's all I've got.
Any questions of the Town Manager, Commissioner? Mayor's report's real simple. Starting to feel like summertime. Traffic's picking up. I don't have any bad news. I'm excited that summertime, summer season is here and seeing everybody have a good time. We have an upcoming meeting with the Brunswick County people in regards to hurricane preparation and direction, so we'll be moving on preparation on the town's behalf here in the next few days and weeks. We'll keep everyone up to date on that. And the bike path project is still on go. Everything's fine in regards to that. And construction on the island is good. Just don't have any bad, bad news, and the good things going on at Holden Beach. We appreciate everything everybody's doing to help keep this place beautiful and special. Thank you to the Holden Beach Beautification people for, Town Hall looks wonderful. It's just a great place to live and be, so thanks to all of you. Rick Smith, Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, sir. I'm going to try to make this as quick as I can, but I'd like to start out by thanking Rhonda Wooten for all of her years of service to the town of Holden Beach. She was an asset to all of us. I've known her every bit of 30 years, and I'm happy for her that she's finally going to get to retire. I'm sad for the town that we're going to lose her, but I hope we can get somebody up to speed and fill that position I think we have, and somebody that can hopefully fill those big shoes. The second thing is thanking staff for the installation of the restroom trailer at the pier. They are doing an excellent job building a ramp that'll be, it looks like it's going to be in line with any ADA regulations and handrails. And I've had a chance to stop by and speak with Chris and his staff. They are doing an absolutely great job in the inside of that trailer, is exactly what Brian and I had envisioned. I think it's going to work well for us. It's also good to see 796, as David said. There's work being done there. I mean, they're making progress, and from what I've talked to some of the guys, they said they had a deadline, and they were going to try to get it done in time to, in the allotted time for it, but it's starting to really, really look great. The town staff, maintenance staff, also cleaned up Halsted Park gazebo. It looks considerably better. Some of that times, that is used for something other than a gazebo, and it's good to get it cleaned up, and hopefully, it'll stay clean. Golf carts, you know good and well, I'm not going to let it rest. Low-speed vehicles, also known as golf carts. If you've been listening to the news, you've heard of the tragedy of what happens when an automobile hits a golf cart. There was loss of life and a lot of injuries. We need to be diligent, and all I can say is I would please ask our police force to enforce the seatbelt laws of North Carolina, as well as the speed limit on those is 25. If they're going 35 or 40 miles an hour down the road in some of these hopped-up carts, they're just, they're terribly dangerous. They're not designed to go that speed. The next thing is the dogs. Alan's talked about it before, and I've got to talk about it again because I had a lady call me in tears. She was walking up the beach, and there was some dogs that were loose, which the owners got a hold of them when they walked by, but they hadn't gone more than 50 yards, and the dog came up behind them and actually tripped her and made her fall. I'm on the oceanfront. I see them out there all the time. By the time an officer gets there, they're either gone or moved on where I can't see them anymore. But we need to do something there also. I mean, if we're not going to enforce the ordinance to keep them on a leash, and as of, I think, the 20th of this month, they can't be out there from nine to five, but we've got to do something. I think maybe, especially in the evenings when people are walking, I think it would be a good idea maybe to have some presence out there. That doesn't mean an officer walking up the beach. I mean, they've got four-wheel drive trucks, going east end, ride up to 800 and go back out, just so people that see that they're there, and maybe we can curb some of that. But it's just dangerous, I think, for the kids and for adults alike if we can't do something about it. And she said to me on the phone, enough is enough. Two more things, and I quit. We all have to put the hammer on it. I'm glad to see everybody moving forward. We're moving forward to Lockwood Folly Inlet, that is, as Brian says, and I agree. That's something that is, I truly enjoy getting out in the ocean, and right now, we don't have that entitlement to be able to get out there. The island, as Alan said, the island looks great. I don't believe I've ever seen the houses as painted and things looking at nice, trees planted, flowers planted. The Holden Beach is actually looking the best. I've seen it look in a long time. And I want to thank the homeowners and for the hard work and expense that they put out to make their homes look great, which makes Holden Beach look great. Bike Week is in effect. There's a lot of people on motorcycles. Please be careful. If you see a motorcycle or something, you can't see them as good as they can see you. So please be careful and be mindful that there are a lot of guys and gals out on bikes for the next week, especially enjoying the motorcycle rally that goes all the way from Shiloh to all the way down to Merle's Inlet. So there's a lot of motorcycles out there. And thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. It's good to see all you folks and the ones that are online. Thanks for listening with interest. I know you all want Holden Beach to be the best it can be. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I want to thank everyone in the room that came out tonight and everybody listening. You know, I've stayed up till nine o'clock tonight, apparently, so that's a good thing. Want to thank the staff of the town, especially Tim Evans, who's grinding right now to get through a retiree that we all love and miss, and Rhonda. And I know he's having to work double time to make those wheels still turn over there, and we appreciate that, Tim. The ladies at the Beautification Committee had their plant sale over the days at the dock, again, at our shop up there, and they pulled off another good one, it looks like. They didn't carry much out of there. It looked like a couple wagons full. They had a really good sale, and they gave me a reason to have a nice, clean office up there again. Really enjoyed having their company again this year. Everybody cross your fingers for Lockwood Folly Inlet. I mean, it's a blessing if we get this done. I don't know what December would be like without being able to access that ocean. All of those Shiloh inlets in fairly decent condition right now. The bathroom's just about done. For those of you that don't know, they're at the pier. The portageons will be removed, and hopefully, these are facilities which we will have or obtain some more of in the future where we may never have to deal with a portageon again. So very nice improvement there. And you guys enjoy the rest of the spring weather. I think it's going to turn hot pretty quick, so enjoy the last of the cool and the warm days, because I think the heat's coming, and I hope for a good season here at Holden Beach, and everybody stay safe and enjoy the summer.
Doctor?
So it's a fairly short meeting, but I want to reiterate, the staff is working their butts off. I think there's a lot of projects going on, the pier, Block Q, stormwater, all kinds of stuff. And I especially want to thank everyone for the Lockwood Folly Inlet. I think that emergency action was much needed. I want to reiterate with Brian, if you're coming here and you're renting a jet ski or pontoon boat, and you don't know how to navigate that water, you don't need to be in it, especially if you don't have a depth finder or whatever. The worst thing you can put in there is a jet ski that you don't know how to run. It's like a motorcycle. If you don't know how to ride it, you're going to get hurt. So just keep in mind that that's a dangerous spot if you don't know what you're doing. And I think Brian made a point of that. I just want to reiterate that. Touching base on the dogs, a lot of people get angry because they want to know why we don't want dogs on the beach between nine to five. It's a safety thing. I want to bring up again that I see people running across the sand, and they forget their flip-flops, and they're running fast and hopping. You don't realize when you've got your flip-flops on, your dog's feet are going to get burnt. You've got shoes on, and you're walking your dog across hot sand, so that timeframe is to help keep them safe because their feet burn. Also, if you have a dog that's white or a light-pigmented dog, even if it's a big dog, if it's white and bare areas, they're going to get sunburnt, they're going to get skin cancer. I've never seen more skin cancer than when I've moved here. I'm taking it off dogs constantly. So it's not a punishment to say we don't want your dogs on the beach between nine to five. It's not safe in the summer in 80, 90-degree weather with humidity to have them on the beach. So just keep in mind, you know, they don't need to be out. Let them stay at home in the air conditioning, play with them when you get home. I hope everybody can have a happy, safe Memorial Day. The facilities are going to be great up at the pier, but I want to please, please, plead to the public, keep them clean so the person coming in behind you doesn't have to see a mess. You know, throw your trash away. Wipe up your counter after. Just be clean. It's a big expense for the town. It's much needed, but we all need to work together and be kind to one another and take care of it so the next person behind it has a clean restroom. But have a safe and happy Memorial Day.
All right. Madam Clerk, does this complete our agenda?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion? We adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion. We adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Second, anybody?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Unanimously approved, we are adjourned.